I need a motion and we can be to open session. I need a motion and second.
Motion.
All second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, try it, would you do the pledge of allegiance?
Please everyone stand for the pledge. We'll have a moment of silence afterwards. Soldiers, not veterans. Aye.
To the flag, the United States of America, in two very public, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Doglett, present.
Mr. Ramarango. Present.
Mr. Ferrioli.
Here.
Mr. Rabel.
Here.
Mrs. Kennedy.
Present.
Mr. Adams.
Present.
Mr. Nucci.
Present.
Mrs. Donnelly.
Present.
Mrs. Manzi.
Present.
Mr. Riddelman.
Present.
Mrs. Hutchinson.
Hi, Mr. Rudnick.
Present.
Ms. Hughes.
Here.
And this begins.
Thank you.
Our primary changes in meeting, our senior changes. Alright, so we're moving to suspend the business meeting. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now we can be into the public hearing. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public, uh, public hearing.
I've been talking about the budget for a long time, but I just would like to go over once again the highlights from the budget, pulling out the most important, um, points. Our revenues are comprised of the tax levy, which is at the cap, at a hundred and twenty million, eight hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, other sources of revenue, including state aid and miscellaneous revenue, uh, are sixty-three million dollars, bringing us to the total of a hundred and eighty-four million, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the sixteen-seventeen budget, as compared to where we were last year at about a hundred and eighty million. A one point two-five percent tax levy increase over the prior year. So fifteen-sixteen was, um, one point two-five percent higher than fourteen-fifteen. The proposed, the adopted budget is point oh-eight of a percent above fifteen-sixteen. Uh, this details, again, what I just spoke about. Um, the monthly impact is sixty-one cents for the home that we always say is the average home assessed at fifty thousand dollars. Um, the impact for the year for that average household is seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, sixty-one cents a month, as compared to last year's increase, which was nine dollars and change. We've seen our tax levy increase, decrease over the past several years. Um, thirteen-fourteen, we were under the tax levy cap, which everybody calls two percent, but we've talked about their exclusions to that calculation whereby even though we were within the, um, allowable levy cap, commonly called two percent, we were really above, you know, we're at four point one-four, four point one-seven, which is still within the cap. But you see, over the years, we have dropped down so that now we are just barely above zero, in essence at zero, but point oh-eight of a percent. Um, we do have some savings from staffing reductions, uh, three from retirements, just attrition where the positions were not replaced, and a point six, which was actually a staff reduction. Without, uh, a reduction in the programs that we're offering. There are many investments that we're making into the program. Uh, last year, we saw the addition of five math specialists to serve, uh, as coaches for teachers at the elementary level, um, and also they do some teaching with the students. Mostly they're supporting students directly. Evaluating after having that additional support staff, uh, it's been determined that they really need another FTE, another position for that support to, um, be equalized over the districts at a level that's desired. Mrs. Manzi has discussed the integrated co-teaching program that she's bringing into the middle schools, um, which requires four teachers and also, um, replacing, the goal is to replace some behavior consultants with on-staff teacher, uh, professionals. So that's the three behavior specialists you see here. That'll be a savings ultimately for the district because, uh, the consultants are more expensive than having, uh, a dedicated professional on staff. And there are other benefits to that too. It's better to have our own people who are great. Yes, okay. Um, and then there is a non-instructional, um, person being added in the technology department to support all the additional, uh, hardware and, uh, use by teachers and students. These are the highlights of, um, what's been included in the sixteen-seventeen budget. A lot of really good things, maintaining our favorable class sizes, enhanced STEM initiatives, including an hour of coding at the elementary schools, um, additional STEM course offerings, which I'm going to ask Dean to detail what those are.
We have two additional course offerings at the secondary schools, which is advanced topics in computer science, as well as 3D design and printing with some of our 3D printers, um, as well as expanding some of the programs that we started this year for STEM in our elementary program. We had in-house field trips, um, that focused on, uh, engineering and, um, developed portion of technology, which is the, uh, I'm losing my train of thought, I apologize, but, uh, around lighting and electricity. Uh, we're looking to move that not only into fourth grade, but also up to fifth graders as well.
Thank you. Um, and increasing the science research program at the high school. Increased technology, instructional technology in our classrooms, uh, piloting of Chromebooks and shared iPad cards in each elementary school, um, enriching the literacy program further, continuing the middle school, uh, writing project as part of that, expanding the classroom libraries and literacy materials, which is a continuation of what's been done already.
Last question on a previous slide.
Excuse me? Yes.
Uh, this is a question we go to Dean. If you could talk a little bit about, uh, increased science research program at the high school?
Uh, we have a proposal, uh, from our director, our science chairperson, to, um, enhance some of the opportunities that we're currently having, um, increasing parent communication. We, we currently have a body of all the courses.
Can you turn your microphone on, Dean?
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
Is that good?
Yep. Thanks.
So, um, in line with that, so, we are looking to increase parent education. We're looking to see if we could talk about, um, maybe not for next year, but for the year further, to dedicate an entire, uh, an entire staff member for the program itself.
So not this time, September, September after?
Correct.
So that wouldn't be part of the year after's budget?
Yes, that's, some, these are all conversations that we're having. It's going to be a multi-year plan, uh, in a given place. Um, we're doing in-house symposiums, uh, we're increasing our field trips, um, we are looking at, uh, funding a summer program, uh, to be able to do like almost like a camp. That would be for this coming summer.
That will be the summer. And who go that, uh, is that nine to ten or nine to twelve?
It will be open to students who are interested in the research program, so it could be nine to twelve. We, we anticipate probably more of our nine to ten grades, because, um, but it's a kind of a week-long program, um, that will be, if, what will allow it to happen is, uh, our science research teacher will be able to take topics and go into in-depth research about those topics. Gives them more time to kind of expand on, on to the problems that they're dealing with.
And that will be housed at the high school?
Be housed at the high school. Uh, we're looking at, uh, that's for the sixteen-seventeen. And again, just some of the things looking for, not for next year, but possible discussion items for next year is, uh, the creation of an after-school, middle school program, um, as well as looking at the waiting for the courses, uh, in our science program, and looking at the, the naming of those courses to see if, uh, that would open up and attract more students.
So the only monetary impact I see so far from what you're talking about is the week course over the summer?
Correct.
What are the other impacts financially?
If we were to move the timeline forward, uh, there could be some staffing impacts, uh, with regards to FTEs, and there would be, um, I think that would probably be about it. We, we did a nice job with making sure that we're fully funded, um, with regards to supplying equipment money. Uh, we have recently, we did, um, they were given the opportunity out of an iPad card, uh, I'm sorry, not an iPad card, a ProBook card. We are in the process for next year to replace the, uh, laptop card that they currently use as well, so that'll be updated as well, so that's, that's something that's in the budget for this year.
So the kids that are going into the twelfth grade, how are they impacted by this change?
That's more of an in, independent study program. Uh, we're looking to, it won't be impacted directly by this, but we're looking to increase their opportunities, um, and supporting them in, in trying to get their partnerships with the local universities.
I already hit on the, uh, increased early intervention services. That's the support for the elementary students, uh, with the math support teachers, the, the five from last year and the one additional. Um, an expanded use of research-based math and literacy programs are being focused on this coming year. Expanding graduation pathways for the high school students. Um, the connection was made in fifteen-sixteen for the business academy.
It will be certified this coming year.
Okay, well, all of this all integrated together and connected, okay. Um, looking, uh, for more academies, moving forward with career academies, and which one in particular do you?
Currently on the, uh, the, we're looking at STEM, cosmetology, culinary, and medical program.
Okay. So that's going to happen in September coming?
No, that's, we're going to start looking at those in September.
So then, again, that isn't a monetary?
These are items that were part of the presentation that I made regarding the current state of the program and where the program is moving. So, some of it does have monetary impact, some does not. Um, the creation of the academies, the goal is to not have an impact in the district, but be able to recoup money from, uh, students who potentially go out outside of the district for some of those services.
So I guess the budget is supporting what CTU pathways haven't established already, fifteen-sixteen, and others that we're planning for additional, but I think this is more speaking to, uh, supporting what's been put in place so far. But I do think that some of that's going to open up potentially in sixteen-seventeen. Some of your planning is going to come to fruition with, um, health, hospitality, and culinary.
The discussion.
Okay. But that's what I budgeted for, budgeted for what's in place so far.
Thank you.
Planning isn't, isn't hitting the budget yet. And then, um, just continuing, uh, we all know we have outstanding athletics programs, arts, plays, music, um, just dynamite programs for your kids, and, uh, athletic programs too. We've seen a lot of combinations for the year here, so the budget will continue to support that as it always has. Um, on the budget, you will see, uh, when you go to vote, you will see proposition one for voting for the budget or against the budget, no. Um, but also, there will be a second proposition for establishing a capital reserve. That's not for funding it, that is just for establishing it, so that should there be surplus funds in any year going forward, that the board desires to put into a reserve to fund future capital projects, uh, which there's always a need throughout the district to keep our, um, fixed assets, our buildings, um, up to par, then we will have that avenue to support those projects in the future. But again, proposition two is voting for the establishment of the reserve, not funding it, but establishing it. The funding occurs, um, from a board resolution in the future, after it's established. And then we're just asking that you come out and vote, um, as Mr. Nucci always says, so wisely, the enemy of a low budget increase of a very good positive budget that includes all the programs and services that we have always enjoyed, the enemy is complacency. So if people think, oh, you know, it's going to pass, it's practically zero, that's when you have problems, when you're cutting something, or, uh, you know, if there's a risk that something will not happen if the budget doesn't pass, you have all the supporters for those programs coming out to, to vote. So, um, don't be silent, um, cast your vote either way that, that you wish to vote, but be sure you come out and vote. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
I do appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, we have candidates for the Board of Education election. I'd like to introduce Robert Rabel and Eileen Panico as the, uh, two candidates that are running for, I guess we say?
One, one seat.
A one seat. Uh, Mr. Rabel, would you like to say a few words?
I think I want to let ladies go first.
Well, you're on the ballot first, I'll let you go first, yes.
Uh, good evening, folks. I'm running for Robert Rabel. Um, my parents moved me here to Bohemia forty-five years ago, when I was one. Um, I'm a nineteen-eighty-eight graduate of Connectwood High School. I am a St. John's graduate, uh, I have a bachelor's degree from St. John's, I have a master's degree from Dowling College, and a school, uh, district administrative certificate from Dowling as well. My wife and I have three young daughters. We live in Oakdale, um, we've been living in Oakdale for about twenty years now. All three go to, uh, one goes to OBMS, and the other two go to Bostie. Um, I'm an eighteen-year educator. I taught fourth and fifth grade for several years. I was a middle school assistant principal for several, several years, middle school principal for five years, and now I'm currently in my seventh year, uh, as high school principal at Hamilton High School. So I look forward to the challenges ahead, and of course, I want to meet any questions.
Thank you.
I don't know about Mr. Rabel, but I need my notes. Sorry, I write everything down.
That's fine.
So Eileen Panico, if anybody doesn't know, and I'm running for the Board of Ed. My husband and I chose to live here about twenty years ago when I was pregnant with my first child. We did a lot of research on all the districts around, and we chose Connectwood. All of our children have gone through the Connectwood School. My oldest is now in her second year of college. I have a senior who, um, in the high school and a tenth grader in the high school. I've always supported the PTA and became a member as my children reached this, uh, school age. I was, um, I became very active in the PTA. I was treasurer for Duffield, as well as council representative. I also became council president for two terms. I also am an active, a currently active member of the high school PTA, and I continue to volunteer for all the schools, including Zuffield. I really love Halloween Fun Night, it's my favorite. You guys go? Um, I'm also an active member of around Concomit Civic Association. I became a member five years ago when it was reorganized, and I participate in all their events for the community. I became the treasurer for one term, then ran for VP where I currently serve my second term on a nine-member board. I like to support all groups in any way that I can, whether it be as a volunteer or spectator. I love the activities that these groups provide to keep our children engaged and busy, and keeps them from roaming the streets. I've been outspoken about opting out, and I believe that we need to do what's best for all children. I've attended over seventy Board of Ed meetings in the past four years, and as you know...
You're kind of campaigning there, Eileen.
Oh.
You're supposed to just give a lie.
Okay. Alright, we'll skip that part then. I do take the, the videotapes of all the things. I believe in a diverse Board of Ed. Um, I think that we have...
That's campaigning.
Okay, sorry, I'll change that too. Before I became actively involved in the community, I worked full-time. Um, I was the president and CFO of a subcontracting firm for ten years, where I did the accounting, bookkeeping, and budgeting for projects in excess of two million dollars. I handled project management and contract review, along with estimates for new work. Before that, I did accounting and bookkeeping for several firms. All in all, I have over twenty-five years' experience in this, um, field. I went to Suffolk Community College later on in life and received my associate's in accounting. I then continued on to St. Joseph's College in Patchogue. I matriculated into their three-year bachelor's, master's programs, and I'm only missing a few classes, but I put that on hold due to my husband's illness and my volunteer activities. I feel my experience with these boards. Alright, that's campaigning. I look forward to seeing everyone on May seventeenth. Sorry, didn't know that that was campaigning, I apologize. I look, I hope everybody comes out and votes on May seventeenth. Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving over to public comments on the public hearing only, which is the presentation that Ms. Donnelly had run just a few minutes ago. Anybody have any questions regarding her presentation? I allow the questions now.
The treasurer's report, is that part of this, that presentation?
No.
Not yet? Oh, wait. Yeah, I'm all off tonight.
So Sharon, I guess you did a spectacular job, not one question.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're adjourned in the public session meeting, and we're going to the public hearing, and we're moving into the business meeting. I need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second? I need a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now, I need a motion and a second to reconvene to our business meeting. It's, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're moving to the minutes of the eve, uh, as BoC's, administrative budget vote in for the election. I need a motion and a second?
Motion.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hughes, Ms. McGinnis?
Alright, so we started selling prom tickets today, and they're also on sale tomorrow. It's a hundred and ten dollars each ticket. And then there's been contests all week throughout the district. I know Thursday's a big one up high, I mean Friday's a big one up high school, and then the art show at Connectwood is at five PM on April.
Thank you. There's the on-site induction, uh, from the high school. Um, the new inductees are getting inducted to May twenty-third at Land's End. Um, the senior banquet's also at Land's End, it's two late, two days later, uh, May twenty-fifth. And then we're having, uh, on-site is having their second annual search groups. Uh, I mentioned it in the last meeting, but, um, a refresher is that it's students and teachers playing, uh, against each other, five people, co-ed teams, uh, but we're doing it all for service members and our current members. What day is that then? What?
What day is that?
It's May twenty-seventh.
Can I ask a quick question about senior banquet? Are those tickets on sale now as well?
Those tickets were on sale when they came out. They were on sale.
No, the first day in May.
Oh, okay.
No, no, first day in April.
Are they still going on?
No, they were like one night, I think.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Please, hey, what are you doing?
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving over to the, uh, business. So this is the Nassau Southern School Board Association fifty-seventh annual meeting. Um, they're going to adopt their budget for the next year, and also elect their officers and executive committee members, and also head up board service boards. The guest speaker is the Richard Braggatillas, and the board member who wanted to go...
Andrea?
Have a consensus to...
Microphone.
So you need a consensus first, and then we see, then we go to who's elected to go?
It's a review.
Serious and interest?
Alright, so, Mr. Rabel, you have any interest in attending the Nassau Southern School Board Association?
No, thank you.
Ms. Kennedy?
No, thank you.
Nick?
No, thank you.
Right?
No, thank you.
I guess we're tied notes, okay, so nothing to discuss further on that. Okay, we're moving over to, uh, public comments. Step up to the podium, address the board president only. You may address one or more topics at a time allotted. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building, for safety. The speakers will be provided up to the evening.
This is the one that agenda items will be, um, first, and then any other topics.
Okay, so agenda items first, and then if, uh, anybody doesn't have any more agenda questions, uh, anytime allowed, uh, after the thirty, uh, within the thirty minutes, can speak. So Mr. Cliciel, do you have an agenda or a question?
No, I think that what was on the agenda, uh, I think so.
Y'all see if anybody else, does anybody else have an agenda question?
Did I hear my treasurer's report? I have two good questions, Mike. The treasurer's report, there's a special aid fund for one point four million dollars. What is that fund, and what's, what is it used for?
That's what all our grant money is recorded in, all gray activity.
Okay, great. And then BoC's, we received two point seven million dollars in state aid for BoC's. How do we spend this? Let's do it again.
That's all part of our state aid, so when I talk about the sources of revenue, taxes, and then other than taxes, other sources, there's miscellaneous, and the majority of the money is state aid.
Right.
Which BoC's needs apart.
Right, but what is that exactly? Because it is a separate line item, so what does that exactly entail? Like, what kind of things would that BoC's line item go for?
It's used all to fund the budget in its entirety.
Okay, so then no specific, like, you know, take BoC's, just for BoC's app projects?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any agenda questions? Can you speak, Cliciel?
Thank you. Uh, I have a number of issues here to ask the board. Uh, the first one is about elementary class coverage, and I wanted to know if that issue has been resolved, either in executive, by consensus, by a vote. Uh, we all know what the issue is. Uh, has that been discussed, or is that going to be voted on this evening? Ms. President?
It was definitely, we definitely had a discussion on it.
Okay, let me, and since it doesn't seem like it's going to come to closure tonight, let me give some factual information to the board. I met with a number of teachers the other day. We all know that attendance and substituting has been an issue, uh, at all our schools. Uh, just some, some facts to go along with this. Uh, I met with teachers, uh, there are children who have not been to the library over two months in this school district, that are elementary schools, because the librarian is constantly called out to cover other classes. So kids are going without library services. Our IAs, who, uh, get grant money, are not being used for the legal purpose they've been hired for, and how to student provide services to our needy kids. They are being used as substitute teachers. They're allotted six hundred hours, and those hours, rather than going to children, are going to covering and acting as substitute teachers. Our RTI reading and math specialists are being used to substitute classrooms, rather than providing services to children, okay? This is educational malpractice. It's been going on for months and months. The association has been extremely patient. I've had a number of conversations with individuals, administrators, and everyone agrees. It's educationally bad policy, and to this date, mid-May, still have done nothing about it. Something needs to change quickly, because for every day our kids miss those services, that puts them closer and closer to needing more remedial services, and eventually special education. The purpose of RTI, the purpose of IAs, is to prevent them from going into special services, and we are not providing those services. Something needs to change drastically. We have offered a solution, and it's fallen on deaf ears. Please consider that quickly, so that our kids do not lose any more precious time that they need to, uh, get remediation. that they need to, uh, get remediation. The second issue I wanted to bring up is one that's been going on as well. Uh, the association's been extremely patient on it. I've had a number of conversations, okay? Uh, not here at your meetings over the last couple of months and it has to do with the FERPA violation. A letter, email was sent at eight oh six a.m. following the Tuesday night board meeting on a Wednesday morning to five of my members. It accused them. It accused them of violating federal FERPA policy.
Is this a legal issue?
No, it's not. No, it's not a legal issue. It's not a legal issue. Yeah, please. I've been told that it was not an accusation. However, the email specifically says represents a FERPA violation. There's no question in the email that was sent that it was an accusation. I have emails here also from, uh, Mrs. Adams, okay? From Ms. Losing back to Mr. Mittelman that was...that were foiled, okay? That specifically say, okay, uh, when Ms. Adams says it's potentially a FERPA violation, according to Ms. Losing, you sent a very angry email on Tuesday night. Unfortunately, the contents of that email is blanked out.
It's time. Do you use personnel?
Huh?
You use personnel.
I apologize for that. Uh, do I have...anybody else want to speak? We have about twenty minutes left, all right?
Uh, anybody else has anything else to say?
Yeah, I have. Fifth grade, I understand there's going to be a district-wide fifth grade final given this year. Uh, first week in, uh, first week in June.
It's not a final, it's a benchmark.
A benchmark given in June when there is... There is research, strong research evidence that students lose, uh, information over the summer. We're giving a benchmark.
I'm sorry.
We're giving a benchmark in, in June, which is... Benchmark, from my understanding, is supposed to be beginning of the school year and used to drive instruction to the teacher, not given when there's... Could be confounding types of variables about like losing things over the summer, losing information over the summer.
It's my understanding that, um, at the request of some of our staff, especially in the sixth grade, that they're looking for some data that, that will allow them to start the year off. This was a suggestion that they took for, and we, um, we have met with the fifth grade teachers and I would say that those didn't pretty much onboard with creating the assessment and, you know, and being able to use as a diagnostic tool.
My understanding, it's not being created. I understand it's a two-day test, takes, takes an hour a day. Um, teachers have no, uh, do not see the test prior to it being administered. This smells like state testing and, uh, teachers can't see it. And I have to question why parents have not been notified. With seventy-five percent opt-out in this district to withhold information on that test under the beginning, students, fifth grade students across the district, why weren't parents notified?
This is a conversation that will have perfect team.
But I'm asking, I'm asking...
I'll look at the...
I'm, I'm asking the top management.
The two questions you had are what?
Uh, well, parents, parents have not been notified. I'd like to know why. And I think parents, given the opt-out movement here in this district, seventy-five percent, I think they would have something to say. It, it smells sneaky. It does. When I first heard about it, it didn't sound good. It sounds like something's looking to be hidden. And why would that happen?
The...I'll look at the length. I'm not sure about the length. I'm not sure about the...
It's an hour over two days. That's what the math grade teachers were told by an administrator in your, in your district.
So I'll look at the length. Um, we use it as a diagnostic tool, uh, similar to Ames Web, which is something that we use periodically throughout the year. It's something we do not notify parents of. So that same thought process, um, is why we, we chose to create it the way we did, um, to use it the way we are using it. It's not a grade for a student. It's not a grade for a teacher. It's a diagnostic tool that allows our teachers, who will ask for this, to be able to start September with information regarding students that they have moved their buildings.
I think some parents might have something to say about them not being notified. I mean, you guys can say whatever you'd like to say, but you're giving a two-day test. And by the way, from my understanding, you're also using Scandrons with fifth grade students and I don't know how much familiarity and experience they have with Scandrons.
Again, are teachers a part of the process of developing these and, and implementation and the discussion? So, uh, I will bring it back to, uh, to our director and, and see where we are and I'll...
This middleman, not, not all teachers.
You said the teachers are part of...
The sixth grade teachers asked for this.
So who's constructing this?
Uh, I'll have to look at the, the actual, who is constructing it.
BoC's.
We are part of a consortium that has developed tests. I'm not sure if we're actually using that assessment or assessment that we're, we're developing on our own, but I'll, I'll get that...
He hasn't been using one. It's about, that's not what's communicated to teachers. And while you might be under the impression and you're communicating that teachers were aboard on this, I'm not sure that all were. I think those that showed opposition to it were stifled, okay? That is our understanding. I'm sorry, just telling you what our understanding is.
To my knowledge, um, you know, there was one conversation with one individual teacher, uh, with concerns about it. The same information that I gave tonight regarding the, the method and the purpose and the intent, um, was communicated by the building principal to that teacher. I did sit in on one of the fifth grade meetings at one of the buildings. Teachers were interested, excited and, and wanted to participate.
So it's not exactly what we hear.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have two more questions on the agenda. Can I ask that? Um, there was a budget transfer game. Was that you? Budget transfer from Health and Dental to PPS. Um, I know we had, uh, someone come to council and talk to us about the district-wide climate survey. But we didn't know the price tag was twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. Is that what this budget transfer is for?
Yes, it is.
It's a big...
Wait, wait, question again?
Um, there's a, there was a transfer from Health and Dental to PPS, which I don't know what PPS means.
People first health services.
Thank you. And then it was for twelve thousand nine hundred dollars and I know at council, um, we were talked to about a district-wide climate survey.
So they're saying the climate survey was twelve thousand nine?
That's...is it twelve thousand nine hundred dollars? So that's my question. Is that how much that survey cost? Is that a necessary...
No, 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 I gotta stop that. I was... I was, exactly. I was under the impression it was six thousand dollars. How do we get twelve nine? Whoa, whoa, whoa. The board was not notified of this. The board was only notified of six thousand dollars.
It's current animal.
So then why was it...I'm sorry, Ellie. Why did it...it was brought to us that it increased double?
That was a question that was asked months ago. We, we were talking about the six to twelve, the only bill that we had at that time, the code was for like six to twelve. When did you get the bill? No, the board actually said, why don't we do a K through twelve or put it up district-wide? And we just got the...we just got the board.
So you already paid for some of it because I know that she showed us some of the samples?
None of it has been paid for.
So none of the instruments that we saw that, okay, at council were paid for and events, okay?
So then why was the transfer made?
Right, now what are we going to do with that transfer?
The transfer said, we, we're going to approve it. The transfer is on the board agenda, but the project itself is on hold for now.
So then we need to approve it first and then transfer the monies?
I mean, that's, that's...you transferred before the right...
So you were in anticipation of this being approved for thirteen thousand dollars?
That was...what? The project is on hold.
It's on hold because of that price tag, okay?
For, for a bribe.
Okay, but one of them is that, that...
While we're on that subject, how many questions were going to be on this climate survey?
There was a lot. There was like seventy questions.
Seventy questions?
Seventy questions.
Seventy, right?
Yes.
You know what? I don't...I don't...
The project is on hold for a lot of different reasons, so...
It's like the initial thing for the...I listen, I can only speak for myself when I had some input on this. I said the natural number fifteen questions and they had to be key questions. You're going to ask three, thirty, four, fifty teachers to sit for seventy questions?
No, that's not, that's not... Every different grade level had to have that.
So then who was answering seventy questions?
No, there was seventy questions on each of the whole...
Yes, a seventy question for each...
Yes, from third all the way up. There was seventy.
So third grade is what's answering seventy questions?
And I did, I did talk about, there was one question on there about LGBT, uh, community. So I did have concerns about that. A lot of parents want to speak to their kids about that on their own. I personally don't have an issue with it, but I know there are, there are plenty that do. Um, so they said that they had taken that part out, so I just wanted to make sure that if we do go forward with that, all those kinds of questions that might be controversial to parents are looked over, that we look over that first word.
Right, for a variety of reasons right now, the project is on hold and will not be done in the fifteen, sixteen's period.
Okay, all right.
I don't even agree to seventy questions. I'm so stuck on the seventy questions.
That, it was a research-based program that came through the school climate survey books that came out of the test course and it was something that was once before, months ago. The process had been...
It was a series of questions and I said, pick your top fifteen questions.
You, you, you can't, it wouldn't be statistically significant.
But then you're asking a third...
Absolutely not.
You want to ask, even at...I, I'm going to speak as a mom. You think my son's going to answer seventy questions?
Well, there's, there's been a lot of questions raised. That's why we had meetings with all the different units and that's why right now the project is on hold and will not happen in the fifteen, sixteen's period.
I can't even see how we'd even go forward to asking seventy questions.
And then it may not, and we may choose to not use this view. And that's why they, that's why all of the meetings were discussed with by, uh, by administration and the project was currently on hold.
So I'm getting the impression that he take counsel really before we get it?
No, that was part of the...
No, we didn't get a price tag at council. I pulled this off today, the agenda. We didn't get a...I, I found out about a great...I, I found out about the survey at council, but we did not get a price tag.
I didn't know, I didn't even know that the board had seventy questions.
The total was originally sixty-five hundred, you mean?
That's what I, I just answered to the board. That was the original bill for six to twelve grade. When the, when the board said, why aren't we doing twelve, why aren't we doing K through twelve and all the parents all stayed on three, that was the next bill that we got. That's, that's what we were asking, we heard that from next.
But then, then you should have brought to the board's attention, you got an estimate of twelve nine, because I even know that the board even had a little bit of hesitation spending the sixty-five hundred. They were a little hesitant in even spending that much.
Well, the, the transfer happened on the board agenda and didn't get pulled off even though at this moment we've gotten feedback from all our stakeholders and there, we're not moving forward with the project, so it shouldn't have been pulled off.
So the stakeholders were in favor of asking children, babies. I, I guess they're...
Children, and so we were, that's why we put the project on hold. We're listening to all the different stakeholder groups. That's why Gail Santo presented beautifully to all of our stakeholder groups. We got a lot of feedback from all the different stakeholder groups and the project is being put on hold indefinitely until we can find a vehicle that's better for it.
And what was the top reason for it to be put on hold?
Lot, there were a lot of different reasons. Many of them, many of them were, um, very, very valid reasons, so...
Can you give two?
Seventy questions was one of them. Um, the time of the year was another one. Have, ask the kids to do that while they're getting pre-grads exams, so there was, there were many, many questions.
Cause you brought this to the board's attention in February, so we're talking May, so from February to May?
Ms. Santo has been working with the, with the corporation, getting more votes, figuring out logistics. Then we had a, uh, an event that happened in the district that took her off her pathway and she went and did a beautiful job putting together an anti-drug test course night. And then when she got back to this, one of the pieces is talking to all the stakeholder groups, which is what she just did, and she came back with, uh, with a reaction from lots of groups and she has asked to put the project on hold and we're going to do that. The transfer was already put in motion as of the last board meeting because it was something that was part of the, the whole process and it should have been pulled off tonight. It's not being pulled off tonight.
Any other questions, Ellie?
Yeah, I hear. The, the budget increase, uh, last year was a hundred and eighty million, again to you Sharon, sorry. What were the actual expenditures? In other words, what's left of that amount that is either in reserves or, um, is, is not appropriated?
We're not going to have that information until they're to be years over, which is not till June thirty.
Okay.
And then we spend all summer getting our materials together for the audit.
Okay.
And then the auditors come in and do their testing and give their blessing and reports by the beginning of October.
Okay, all right, so we'll know that.
Yes.
Um, finally, I just wanted, Oakdale, Oakdale Bohemia and Ramkakama Civic also wanted me to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the Oakdale Bohemia Civic meet and candidate night forum at Sycamore School. Ramkakama Civic is Thursday night at Ramkakama Middle School. And then there was another forum, while I'm on that. They're both at seven, seven o'clock, am I right? Seven or seven thirty?
One's at seven fifteen.
Okay, seven fifteen is the Oakdale Bohemia one at Sycamore. Seven o'clock is the Ramkakama Civic one. But there was another forum the other night. Lisa, what was that forum, I'm sorry? At the middle school?
Dr. Saladino on the shield.
Yeah. And it wasn't, there was no robocall that went out about that and it was...
It was something that was on internal to the building.
Okay, because I, I heard it was an awesome thing and I was just surprised that there was like no robocall and we, we...
Was it an event you were speaking about?
I wasn't there.
No, but was it about you speaking about?
Lisa Kennedy has more information on it. If I could give her my point exactly, talk about it. Ellie, I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but it was a great thing.
Say the name of the event.
Dr. Saladino, every year presents to sixth graders. It's called, he calls it the shield. And it's a shield that he had made up with all, um, keywords, strength, perseverance, overcoming obstacles. I had emailed the board and I also emailed some of our administrators about it happening Monday, last, last night. And it would be a worthwhile, uh, presentation to see at least once all our kids that go through RMS are to go. I believe last year was the first year, but it could be wrong where it had held the nighttime. So this year he presented to sixth graders and his seventh, eighth grade students were saying, well, why can't, we want to see you, we want to see you, we want to see it again or, or... So he scheduled the nighttime, uh, which was last night. And the turnout was not...
Yeah, so we don't know about it. Lisa knew she's in that school.
That's, that's an RMS event, so they, they didn't do an interim publication? So the principal didn't send out a robocall?
No, I didn't hear anything about it.
It was a worthwhile presentation to at least see what...
Maybe something that, if it's all you're telling them, maybe it's something that maybe administration can throw out.
We can certainly ask them.
I, I sent the email last week.
Thank you.
Um, I have a quick question regarding the referendum that's going to be on ballot this year. Typically, people read the first ten words of a sentence and they get the gist of what it is and they, they make good decisions of whether to vote yes or no. This capital reserve fund is being set up for multiple purposes and it looks like one of the purposes is to purchase buses and one of them might be to pay interest on capital project boats that, that the district has. That's way different than asking the voters to, to approve setting aside funds for capital projects. And I think, I think that's way too broad to ask people. You're, you could be ostensibly saying, we're going to buy new buses or we're going to put on a new roof or we'll just pay down the interest on our notes. And I think it's misleading to the public when you're asking them to vote yes or no to set aside X millions of dollars into this fund ultimately. Are you, are you using the money for capital projects or are you going to buy buses with it? It's two totally different things. I'm just making a comment. It's misleading to the public.
Thank you, Gail.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
A proposition of that nature by virtually every district is put out that way. It's put out in a way that's broad, expansive and broad and expansive enough to allow for a bond committee to come to, um, agreement on what should be done. The two thousand fourteen capital project is known as the two thousand fourteen bus acquisition and capital projects plan. That is how you buy buses. That is a capital purchase. So, um, and as far as the interest goes, they're discussing, that encompasses then the debt service on bonding, um, debt service is comprised of principal and interest payments. So that's why that's been there. So it's meant to be broad so that the scope can encompass whatever physical assets are deteriorating that are assessed by the bond committee meeting, um, members as requiring a capital improvement. That's not intentional.
I'm just saying as a voter, I would have a different feeling if you were asking me to set money aside to keep our bill, the maintenance of our buildings and our grounds up than I would of purchasing more buses. Or paying down the interest on roofs. Cause that's already factored into the loans and the...
But, but it is part of that plan. And if you recall, we were replacing buses that were well past their life expectancy. They were twenty-five years old, I believe, some of them, with the last capital project. That is how you keep a fleet maintained and that's equally as important as keeping a roof on, that the buses be operating. And that's equally as important as keeping a roof on, that the buses be operational. But I, I do understand your point, but it's not meant to be misleading. It's prepared with advice from legal counsel. The worst thing in the world is to go out for your, your project only to find, "Oh my gosh, we have, we can't, we can't support running our transportation program because we've had five buses fail and we didn't make a broad enough scope in the proposition."
I can get all, apologize that I haven't attended every budget meeting. I don't know what the plan is to purchase new buses this year. I was under the impression that we've already replaced those older buses. But again, you know, it's quite different to ask people to approve setting aside funds for capital projects than it is to, you know, to do a bus purchase or, or paying down the interest on a loan. It's quite different.
It's paying the interest that results from a capital project. It's paying the debt service for that portion of the funding that comes from borrowing. I do understand what you're saying, but...
I don't wanna be a dead horse.
No, no. Bill, are there any other questions?
Good evening. In our last board meeting that we met last month, we asked the question of the board to kind of go back and perform a timely investigation of the minimum class sizes district-wide. Where do we stand with that?
There's a range, as, and I'm very sensitive to the constituents at Pearl. We just had a difficulty justifying a class of 11 and a class of 12 rather than a class of 23 or 22. But what we did assure Ms. White, if those numbers increase to 26, this Board of Education has been exceptionally flexible about carving out new sections. We carved out an apostle last year and a Cherokee. So if the number is justified, I don't want anybody to think that, you know, the decision is final and irrevocable.
Okay, I appreciate that. When will that decision be made? Is that made in the, over the summer timeframe?
It can be over the summer. As you know, sometimes in the north end of town where we have apartments, you get a surge of enrollees in August, we've done it as late as that.
Okay. Is, is there a policy around the minimum class size and can that be shared? Is that probably a...
I wouldn't characterize it as a policy. It's a recommended average.
Okay.
What's carved in stone with our teacher's contract is maximum 125 students per teacher on the second level, grade seven to 12.
Okay.
K to three, we try to come in around 22, 23. Four and five, sometimes coming down to grade three. When it starts hitting 26, we can take a good look at it.
Okay, well, thank you.
To answer your question that you actually asked, I would, class size in that grade level is 21.7.
21.7.
So your 23 is right there, your 11 and 12 is not really...
It's actually 22 and 12 right now.
Yeah, so your 21.7, you have 22 in the...
So you're asking for less than 11?
Right there at the average.
Where, where, our biggest concern is that right now we have a smaller class size. As this group or this community in Bohemia, there are a lot of apartment complexes. We do see surges and drops in enrollment overall. Our concern is, is that if these two classes were to emerge and then we were to have a larger class size, these kids are gonna be at a disadvantage. And from what I see is probably one of the hardest grades. Third grade for my two kids that have already passed through was by far the hardest grade, not factoring in Common Core, which just exacerbates the situation.
But every other class in the district is 21.7, so I, that's the average in every district. You know, every school in our district. So we should allow one to have 11 kids?
No, no, we're not saying that. But what, what we are saying is...
I understand that it makes sense to turn it down.
We will continue to look at it. It goes to that 26, 28 arc where other classes have...
Yeah, Bob did it first time.
Then, yeah, you know, we will monitor the situation and, and, you know, look at it.
We provide the board with ongoing enrollment reports all summer long. Actually, two summers ago, when this team began, we asked, we asked for two separate classrooms to be split in two different buildings because the mother were getting education too large.
And that happened before the classes started or midstream?
Yes, after. Before, before the class started, yes, we did that in August.
And that assessment's gonna be done in August this year to make sure we don't run into that situation?
We do that before every board meeting in a summer.
Excellent, okay.
It's continual enrollment reports. Because we're not ever sure what kindergarten's gonna look like either. So it's something that we do over time all summer long.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, and I, last speaker of this portion, I should say.
Does everyone else who wants to speak again?
I think we have another portion, yes.
I'm Kevin Shapiro, I have four kids in the district. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I realize what kind of time and effort goes into constructing these budgets. And we appreciate, you know, I know the work that goes in. I noticed, you know, that the very first budget highlight, you know, was the idea of the favorable class size, which I think we would all agree is a very important, I mean crucial, you know, particularly at the elementary level. Just to, well, one comment and a question, you know, my first comment would be that Dean, that's obviously the most important, you know, biggest highlight of everything. It would just seem that, in the case that he spoke about the incoming John Pearl third grade, that this would be, you know, a perfect opportunity to really, you know, strive to achieve that goal, you know, for the betterment of our kids. And then my other question would be based on, on, you know, the prior discussion is, you know, I think we all agree that enrollment numbers fluctuate, they ebb and they flow. What would this scenario look like? What would happen if, let's say there was a big surge, let's say in late September, October, et cetera? What would then happen in John Pearl through that third grade? If there were, let's say, an increase that would put us beyond that, you know, 4, 25, 26? What, what would then happen to both the incoming people as well as the current class as it would be configured?
Would you like to answer that question?
We'd definitely look at it, I have to tell you though...
Can you just put your microphone on, Bob?
Oh, sure, sure. Realistically, in our experience, we haven't had surges past September. Traditionally, families are gonna move in and settle. They know when the school year starts and, and we have had surges in late August. But once the school year starts to settle in, it's fairly static at that point. But certainly, I mean, if you're talking hypothetically, sure, we can take a look at it. And I realize that the, the backside of that is, but the class is already in form, what are you gonna do?
Well, that's what a mask essentially is, once it's in place, what would happen there? You know, I, I, I don't know the research, I'll agree with you in terms of, you know, maybe there's less surge, but, you know, life does happen. It's certainly through the school year, you know, people move for various reasons and...
Actually, we, we had the opposite happen last year at Pearl. And the reason there were two sections was, we had 28. And then it dropped by about five students, four to six students. So the opposite has happened. I mean, you're asking me to explain it hypothetical so that...
I'm just saying if this were, yeah, I assume it must have at some point happened before, perhaps you could shed a note of what happened in those cases.
Three years ago, where we had a surge in one building. And the parents seemed satisfied about putting a teaching assistant in that room for the simple reason they didn't wanna break the class up. But again, we don't foreclose on any possibility.
Okay, now, the other thing, you know, related to this would be other than, you know, the teaching position. What's gonna happen in terms of things like art, music, in terms of the school, your resource teachers and things like that? What different, how might that look different moving forward? Being that there's gonna be one less section of class in terms of all of those other teachers, pairs, et cetera?
The denominator in that equation is 30. So 30 sections constitute 1 FPA. So if you have 20, you get 0.667 teacher.
So then in other words, let's say hypothetically, you know, I have a child who receives a certain service. What you're saying in essence is that whenever, you know, my child needs it, that person will always be there for the required amount of time, but they may not be full, full-time at the building?
Maybe there are three days a week and two days another, but if your child is gonna receive their services.
Yeah, just, I was just curious about what would happen in, in the event of, obviously, moving, splitting a class, I would say into the school year. I think we'd all agree would, would be a good thing, but... So in essence, the answer is, as it stands, now you just simply add a teacher's assistant to help kind of mitigate the load?
No, we, we, again, we don't foreclose on anything. I'm just telling you what happened in the past. We will monitor it closely. In our experience, if there's gonna be a surge, it's generally before the start of the academic year.
And again, I would just like to thank everyone and just say, you know, of course, especially third grade, you know, just for me personally, that was a year that really felt like helped shape who I am, Mrs. Gilvary, may she rest in peace. You know, really made a huge impact, third and fourth grade were just so critically important. I would just like you to, you know, just consider that in, in the thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. One quick. My name's Lynn, I have two children at John Pearl. And the teacher aide that you may or may not put into this classroom, will it be fluid in Common Core? Or will it just be somebody who would touch your lenses?
Great, great. Then that decision has been made.
Well, that's my question. I'm, I'm a teacher aide. And my daughter's in second grade going into third grade. And it's a good thing she understands the work because some of the stuff she comes home with already. I'm like, I haven't been in school for a while. So I was told by Lyndon Adams that third grade does not constitute an aide. As when you start third grade, there will be no aide.
But that's, the situation is if the class enrollment got up to 26, which is what Mr. Shapiro was asking, what might we do? And one of the things that we might do is look for a teaching assistant, not an aide, teacher assistant, which is a certificated position. Or we might go and work with the principal and say, "Would you like a half-time teacher to do smaller reading groups?" But these are all hypotheticals because right now we're at 22. So at 22, that's one teacher in third grade. But if we were to get to 26 or 27 sometime in August, that would be something we would raise to the board and say, "Should we split now in August and have 13 and a 14?" They probably would say yes, because they've said yes in the past. The hypothetical was in October, if we got to 26 or 27, what might happen? And there's many different scenarios, one being that we would look for a teaching aide, teaching assistant to go on that class.
Teacher assistant or teacher aide?
Not an aide, not an aide, a teaching assistant.
Teacher assistant.
Correct, a certificated teaching assistant. That would be one scenario, but there's multiple different things that we could do in that scenario. That's just one. If we get there, we'll have that conversation with the parents, with the teacher, with Ms. White, with Mr. Mittelman as instructor for instruction.
Well, this, we were blindsided by this. You, you say that we would have a conversation with the parents, you just said that. And nobody has spoken to the parents in regards to any of this.
It's an enrollment issue. We have 22 students in one grade level, that's one class. That, that fits within, that's way below our guidelines. Right now, across the district, the average in that grade level is 24.7 across the, across the buildings and the... There are some buildings that have 24 and 25 in that grade level right now. It's 22 at Pearl, that's, that's one class.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last speaker for this portion. Alright, we're moving over to personnel matters. I need a motion in a second for Schedule 1, which is designation, termination, leave of absence. All second act, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion in a second for the appointments, the tenure salary and change, salary changes. All second act, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, there's nothing on Schedule 3, let's move over to financial matters. Okay, so I'll get you the motion in a second for items 2 through 7. Motion in? Alright, anybody have any questions regarding to any of these reports? Alright, no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving over to the Senate agenda for items 2 through 9. I need a motion in a second and then we can have a discussion.
No, but they ask you, I'm asking you with number 7. Can we amend number 7 and take off transfer number 1, which is the health and dental to PPS? Please delete that, off of budget transfer, subject number 7.
So pulling 7 and then just, or we just...
We're gonna pull, can we just delete that line item?
We'll delete that.
You can amend the report.
Okay, so we're gonna amend that transfer so that we are not voting, we're pulling off the line item, asking for the transfer to cover the climate survey.
Alright, so I need a motion in a second and then we can have a discussion on any of those items. So, all second act. Frank, all second act. Anybody have any questions on 2, I'm super 9?
Number 9. The best, they didn't have a charter.
Which one is this?
RFS.
Yes.
Society?
Mrs. Gilvery has been investigating very deeply. We actually, board has asked the internal monitors to go over our clubs. And one of the things that they found was there was a charter missing from this particular club. So that was, that was representative. It's OBM and the... Yeah, she, she went and asked for all the charters that were necessary.
I have a question regarding social studies textbooks. When my both children were in the fifth grade, that was actually a key topic on orientation night, of the back to school night. And what the social studies teachers had taught us at the time made complete sense. They didn't wanna buy into the second or third, fourth generation because it always changed. They didn't want the kids walking around with these big social studies books. So they...
I didn't think, yeah, that's the book, right? I was really, when I was sitting here, it's like...
I didn't even see the book.
Yeah, it's really pretty good, I would think.
You see the book? Okay, so we've had books, I'm not saying we shouldn't buy into this, but why on earth are we buying into social studies books when we haven't done it before?
We, they recently released the new social studies framework. We wanna provide additional resources for our staff, it's something that our staff has asked for. Our director of social studies did present the material to the teachers across the district. All of them in favor? We did set up a committee, made up of teachers, building principal, as well as our humanities chairperson at the elementary school. They reviewed several textbook series. This has been, you know, followed on the board policies. The, the goal of this is to provide that resource. This ties very well to a lot of the literacy initiatives that we're putting forth with regards to vocabulary instruction. It has online resources for parents, it's online resources for students, online resources for student, for teachers as well.
So every, the greater in addition is gonna get this book? Every, with greater in addition, and do they keep this at home or they walk you back to home to this?
My understanding is it most likely will stay in school.
Oh, it's gonna stay in school, okay.
But I will get more information on that and get back to the...
So there's no, there's no chapter reviews at the end where they ask you a series of questions? I don't know, cause I'm sure you've been...
They can access it online too. Yeah, it's available online as well.
Dean, the teachers chose this?
We had a group of teachers that sat with our director of social studies, our humanities chairperson, and a building principal to review the different series.
Does the program come with anything else or just the textbook?
We sent a separate cover to, to the board. It has the essential questions to that frame, teaching and learning, an emphasis on reading skills, map globe skills, chart and graph skills, leveled readers to support the ELA instruction, print and online student and teacher editions, digital resources for students, teachers, including access to 7,000 additional titles, classroom management tools, online program that continually updates and is customizable, as well as the online textbook workbook that students can access from.
So the teachers will still be gathering their own resources in the days that this book happens?
That'll be the primary resources, but, you know, we, we always, you know, we know the professionals in the classroom and they are always collecting and sharing information and resources across the grade levels. But it is something that was identified as a need. It was verified by our instructional staff and it's something that we wanted to support.
I think it's right, cause I think for many years we didn't have any books on the best grade. And I know it's a concern with parents.
I think now with the new social studies framework that's out and the professional development that we've done K through 12 with our new social studies director, this is something that has come out of that conversation as well.
Do we have plans to move this conversation forward to 5th grade or 6th grade?
We, yes. They wanted to do, they wanted to do 3 through 5. But we felt at this point, we'll make the initial purchase of grade 5, it's a critical year. And we'll see, next year when we reevaluate to see if we wanna move down to 4th and 3rd grade.
Currently does, I know 4th grade, I believe, uses a textbook. Does 3rd grade?
3rd uses a textbook, they use the online...
We use the Putnam County Social Studies Resource, which is something that is done island-wide pretty much.
What about 3rd grade?
K through, K through 5 uses the Putnam County Social Studies Framework.
So, financial hypothetical, how long do you think we'll be able to use these books for this season? Will you have to price tag?
We, we feel they're in line with the, the framework, which is the new standard et cetera. So we feel that that resource, the online materials and information is, is constantly being updated. So it is something that we can continually use in the...
Let's not say that, we always, so are we gonna get two years' life out of the book for a year's life?
I'll look into what Mr. Frank anticipates as far as the annual life.
Especially moving forward, I mean, if you wanna go further down the line and purchase books, we should wanna know what's the life expectancy for this book before you go...
Is it more major curriculum to explore or is it just a sample?
It depends on, it's important that text, if they don't care.
You know, I mean, actually, the book stand, obviously each book may get destroyed one day and you have to replace it a few years later. But the idea of this, of that textbook being a resource.
We feel it's best in line with the standards right now and those are the newest standards out. It's, you know, obviously there's gonna be work in the professional development that goes along with the resource that we're gonna be providing our staff, hopefully starting at the end of this year, but definitely into next year's.
So this is, this is, this is the lies of what she teaches already in teaching? So I mean, I know my daughters, I can't speak, you know, my daughters, the teachers were great. They gave, they did all the report sheets, they came home. Does, are you asking these teachers to revamp their, what they already been doing? Or does it go hand in hand with what they've been doing?
We are continuously looking at the scope and sequence. It's something that, as the new standards come out and some of the practices change, some of the topics move, it's something that we're continually looking at. As far as changing completely, no, it's in line with their current practice.
Will we have the opportunity for our third and fourth grade teachers to possibly delve into some of these materials now that they're in the buildings? And possibly expedite that process if they want to? And maybe it's a half year instead of waiting a whole year? And getting third, if they choose so?
Being a teacher yourself, you know, when resources come into the building.
I do, that's why I'm asking the question.
They came in and as soon as they came in, everybody went through them. So, and the publisher was great by being able to give us resources for a variety of grade levels. So those resources were quickly taken and reviewed and looked. You know, if the board so chooses, we can definitely start the process now again of reviewing the materials and being aligned with our policy and move it forward at a more frequent pace.
If the teachers feel that this is best for the children, then they can expedite the process in the third to fifth grade level. I'll see what we should consider.
That book actually, I think it's so self-explanatory, it's interesting. The questions that they ask, vocabulary and ask them to write, you know, it's very, totally different.
I will, I'll speak to Mr. Frank tomorrow and see if we can start.
All right, motion on the table, any all in favor? Any other question, Frank?
No, aye.
Aye, okay. All right, uh, nothing more? Okay, so we're moving over to reports, Board of Education Committees. Anybody on the Board of Education wanting to report on the committee there? Okay, moving over to superintendent reports.
Okay. We are full, full voting concert season, as our young lady said before. We've had multiple concerts and we will be having concerts every single night at high school for the next couple of weeks. So if you have a chance to go and listen to some of our wonderful arts, fine arts being presented, that would be a joy to go listen to. I got to listen to Bostie last night, they begin a concert and you forget where they start when you go to the high school concerts. It's just so amazing what they produce and how beautiful their vocals are. When you go to these little, the fourth grade concerts, you forget, you forget how far they come. So it's fun to watch them develop. We have an amazing spring athletics coming to an end. Almost all of our teams are going to the playoffs. So if you get a chance to go out, in fact, I think our girls track team won their sectionals today. So they are the lead champs. There's a wonderful Goodwill story going on there. We have a young lady who's battling cancer, who was unable to even walk this time last year, who's actually running. So it's just wonderful to go out and watch all of our athletes challenge themselves. And our coaches do such an amazing job with our kids. So I believe, and I may be wrong, maybe one team that didn't make it, but almost all of our teams will be in the playoffs, which is exciting. A letter went home yesterday to, oh, actually Friday, to all of our high school parents. As you know, I have had multiple meetings with Commissioner Seamy, the new Suffolk County Police Department Commissioner, in light of some of the events that happened at the high school. And one of the things that he sent to us is, are we a certified K-9 site? Would we like to have Suffolk County PD able to come in and do K-9 searches periodically? Whether we ever use that or not, we just, we need to become a certified Suffolk County site. One of the processes in that Suffolk County certification process was to have policies in place to allow that to happen. Well, our policies are completely up to date with that. And I do thank Andrea for that, because she keeps us moving along with that all the time, to make sure that our policies are up to date. So all of her policies were absolutely up to date. We were provided with a template of a letter from Suffolk County PD and that was sent home to all of our parents and given out in our faculty mailboxes so that we could become a certified SCPD site for K-9 searches. At this point, we have none scheduled. However, we've been working with Lieutenant Varansky of the SCPD and again Commissioner Seamy, who is very interested in helping us make sure that our campuses are safe for our kids. And so we'll be working to see if that's something that can happen potentially before the school year ends, just to ensure that our kids' safety. So that was the first step in that process. Ms. Manzi, Ms. Santo, myself had a meeting with the Joint Army and Navy Anti-Drug Task Force earlier this week. We will be working together with them to create an anti-drug wellness coalition. We will be looking for a lot of different stakeholders to partner with us because the school can only be one of the partners. We can be a founding partner, but we can only be one of the partners in the process of this coalition. They actually were contacted by Ms. Santo for our anti-drug forum that we had about a month ago. And we met with them, they are, what they call a force magnifier. So they come in and they teach us all the rules and regulations behind how to do the outreach to get our community coalition up. So we'll be looking to partner with religious and fraternal organizations. We'll be looking to partner with our students, with our law enforcement, with our PTAs and our parents, with our schools, our teachers, our administrators, with our local businesses. We're looking for media partnerships, our youth services organizations. So that's our local sports organizations. The youth enrichment services of Islib is willing to partner with us already for that. We'll be looking to work with our civic associations. We're also looking to partner with healthcare professionals, government officials, and other substance abuse agencies in the local area. So our first meeting to kind of kick that off with the anti, with the Joint Army, the Anti-Drug Task Force, will be Monday, June sixth, that's seven fifteen. It's our normal task force meeting. So we're going to utilize an already scanning committee that's putting together events for our kids to make sure that our kids are safe. So I invite anyone to come and participate with that. We will be crafting a letter inviting all of our local organizations to partner with us along those lines. And that will open us up and allow us to apply for grants for programs that we can come in to help our kids make better decisions and look for their wellness moving forward. I had the opportunity to spend an entire morning at Pearl about a week ago. Tara Green, who was one of our OBMS science teachers, actually had an opportunity for certain eighth grade students to go and teach hands-on inquiry-based science lessons to our Pearl students in all different grade levels. It was really fun to watch and we had some real naturals that I'm hoping will go into the teaching profession. It was a really exciting day. We do, are, we're excited that we have one science research student right now, I just found out this afternoon, who's actually interviewing for a lab internship this summer in order to build a project with the University in one of the labs there that's doing some work on cancer research. So hopefully, he's interviewing that and hopefully he'll get that internship, moving into this year.
Yeah, I agree.
So that's, there's exciting things going on and that's my report.
Mr. Millman, you have anything?
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
I know, I think you're ahead of this, with the implementation of the smart boards. I know that during spring break, a lot of new boards were installed. I actually got a picture from an anonymous source that there was, by the dumpster area, there were some smart boards that were actually, were they considered viable, usable, or in the garbage?
So if you remember earlier, we had requisitioned to dispose of excess equipment that was obsolete. What our technology staff did is, prior to the installation, they went through, they took all the usable items, cataloged them so that we can use them as replacement parts throughout the district and discarded the items that they felt were end of life.
So they basically worked it guns out and just threw out the frames?
There is, it could be anything. It could be projectors, it could be, they just parts of projectors, they could be state projectors, bulbs, arms. I know a lot of the framing itself went out to the trash. It could have been old boards, it could have been parts of boards.
So no viable board was thrown in the garbage?
No.
Okay, great. Because when I saw that, I'm like, I don't believe that. Sure.
But we did have a hundred thirty-seven or so smart boards put in, give or take a couple here or there. We did have rooms that had some challenges that either recreated the challenge or the outside vendor created the challenge. And working to remedy those situations that we would come with at high school and a couple of times at our elementary schools as well, so.
So the teachers who didn't have technology, were they for some of this to get technologies?
The way this rolled out, this was the second phase. The second phase was a little bit different than the first. The first was identified of those rooms that did not have technology, especially at the secondary level. The second phase focused on grades, I think it was two through four at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, we worked with the building principals and the department chair, regional directors, to identify the rooms. So we went based on their recommendations. The initial intent, because the third phase of the rollout will take place, hopefully the beginning of next year. So that, you know, by the spring, by the fall of next year, we should be installing again and completing the project too. So...
So the fall, would it be anybody who's never had technology has to wait till the fall?
Some of the rooms that we waited until the last phase had to be specialized locations. So for example, an art room, a super science room, rooms that had...
They primary teachers have?
Logistical issues. But we did, we do have fifth grade that still finish. We do have rooms at OBMS and RMS that we still need to finish. But a majority of the rooms are probably rooms that are difficult with the standard installation that we were providing. They may need to have some sort of other technology for the other. So the third phase, we're actually gonna walk, instead of asking the vendor to come in, after we've done a walkthrough, they're gonna actually do the walkthrough with us. So they'll be able to provide recommendations to us at that time with what's best for this classroom.
Okay, thank you.
So on Christmas of this coming year, every classroom should have? The goal is for every classroom to have?
The goal is that by mid-year, everything is completed. I have made these statements before and I haven't followed. Yeah, not me personally, but they haven't come to fruition. We've been, we've had delays, we've had challenges that have come up.
But is the plan of...
The plan is, is that we do that.
Have the same functioning smart board?
Yes. The most important thing is the software. And that's the standardizing item and that's the flattening of the district. Every teacher has access to that. In some rooms, it works better than others because of the technology that's there.
Is it, is, what does the technology moving forward is? Is it perhaps getting the math teachers, in particular like the Elmo's? Because I know that could be very useful with the maths and science.
The project that we finished provides teachers with smart board, a short-term projector, as well as a brand-new teacher computer. A lot of teachers have been requesting Elmo's and we have been trying to purchase those along with this supplying them along the way.
And they're compatible with each other, the Elmo's?
Yes, they're, it's actually, I think it's the same company itself, they own both.
Okay, great.
It, it, it was, it was a...
By textbooks, to model.
Just point so to this.
Just saying.
So it was a, it was a...
Save a tree.
It was a good rollout, but I don't say, I don't think it was perfect. And I think that we can do a better job with remaining patience to our administrators, our staff, as we continue out into the next years of the project.
Thank you. Avada? Avada, what?
Just like to quickly mention that on Thursday, May nineteenth, our Anti-Drug Task Force will be making a presentation. Actually, we are sponsoring a presentation, rebound the Chris Heron story. We're excited to meet the high school and we hope that we have a larger turnout than we have had. Students or students and parents? Yes, at night, seven PM, Thursday, May nineteenth. We're going to be advertising it throughout the buildings and in classrooms. Anyone who's willing to listen or willing to come and come with you? Sharon, do I leave you with the hotel?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Sharon presented.
Okay. Read to the board, Ken? Yes, we're over to Board of Education. Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions?
I have a number of them. First of all, I'd like to read questions, superintendent. Based on policy...
Number one, please.
Based on policy twenty-one ten, here are... When someone gets hired, just with a teacher or a legal placement, I would like to scare the topic, just like I used to do, of all of the paperwork before it goes to us as a group. We've had that done, I've done that before.
Do you mean in executive sessions?
An executive session, according to policy. An executive session, so we can go through it, or I can go through it, or whoever wants to go through and go through it.
Sure.
To make sure that the best candidate is being hired. Okay? Number two, I would like to, Snow, Mr. Millman. Is there a way, when we hire math teachers to help out, we hire, I'm working on middle school, we hire extra teachers for math. Is there already a report every two months or every two and a half months? Without having to review, to see where we are and, you know, how our students are doing? Especially the elementary math head?
So are we looking for all students?
Well, you have these math teachers in the elementary level, right?
The math specialists work with individualized students that have been identified. That's a very fluid process. Some students stay for a topic, some stay for a little bit longer. What we don't want to do is make it a life sentence, so it's, we provide them mediate and then we use a research-based program for the majority of what they do. But some of it is based upon the classroom teacher recommendations, so.
Right, so how do we, how do we look at, see if it's working or based on, just on a test?
We have, we have some data from the system that we use, the series that we adopted. We have some data from a diagnostic tool that we use, which is AmesRev. And we have, most importantly, is the experts in the classroom and their feedback that they give us.
So it's good and bad for us to get it before or something?
It's something that they do at an IST team meeting generally and something that they bring to that committee. I would say a majority of those students go through an IST process before they're recommended to math services. So I could, I could meet with the elementary chairperson for mathematics and see if we can come up with something.
This is, Mr. Miller, we're investing all this money back there, you know, these kids are the ones.
I did send something forward with the rate of service and different things, but I'll look to see if there's something else that we can do.
Okay, and would be the same with the year, you mean, you know, middle school?
Middle school is similar in the fact that we do provide services for students. We don't use a program like we do in the elementary school, but we do have data.
Right, could it be in Robinson, Redd, or are we in somewhere else?
Yes, prior to my arrival, the labs are... We are looking, and that is something that's one of our focuses for next year is looking at the instructional areas. So that is something.
Through a lot of the lab skills, is that?
We have both ELA labs and mathematics labs. And the intent of those is to support students and sometimes to extend the experience. So we're, we're going to be reevaluating the labs next year in the middle school.
Thank you. Number three, there's so much confusion going on this year. And I thought I kept a policy looking, so maybe we can give a consensus here, superintendent. Board members have, are not, are only board members when we're here. They should, they shall inform the superintendent of schools and/or building principal of a school upon their visitation. They have a right to walk into a school. I would like the superintendent to follow that process and to make sure that this does not continue because one, we're wasting principals' time. Board members don't have the authority to walk into schools to speak to principals about their own children unless they follow procedure. And they can see that in their policies. Board members are not board members until we're together as a group. Also, in addition, Mrs. Linda, when a board member, I'll say me first, come to you with a question, concern, or anything that should be written, Mrs. Kennedy has come in, or Nick has come in, or whoever has come in to her, your office to discuss any item, a letter should go to the entire, memo should go to the entire board. I am looking into this because da-da-da-da-da, and I will have the answer at the next meeting or the FYI. This way, we can all be on the same page, we all understand what's going on, we work together as a group, not individually. I hear a concern about books, that board didn't want books. There was never a topic of conversation. I got a phone call, why did you authorize books for math? Who are you talking about? They said it was online, that you guys didn't want to order books for math, da-da-da-da-da. I said, there was never a discussion about that.
I believe this is abortion. I don't believe the board votes on whether or not to.
Well, we don't vote, you just voted on a book, Steve.
We've discussed modules numerous times this year.
We never had a forced consensus for a module. I discussed it with you when running on the, it was interesting, your philosophy, but there was never a board discussion.
It's often numerous times.
Not as a board. You had discussed it, I heard you talking to, to, to Mr. Middleman, but we never had a five-person board discussion. Am I, am I wrong about this?
Yeah.
He's asked Mr. Middleman questions, Mr. Middleman's answered questions about.
But we've never had a consensus on this item.
I don't, is that an item for consensus? Anybody's input or?
That was your, that was. So, yeah, there's never a consensus on anything or not, I'm not a consensus on it. So rather than things like that happening, let's just do it right. Whoever talks to you, or to you, or to you, first of all, we don't have the authority really to talk to you, you know. You're the one we want anyone to talk to, during budget time, because some of us have questions, I would think that. But Lily should go through superintendent. We go through the superintendent, she in turn goes to you. And you give her the answers, we get the answers. That's protocol. And that would lead for better boards working together and understanding what each other's thinking. So do we need a consensus to ask you, Linda, to follow the protocol and inform us? I have a question. And tell the whole board what my question is or my concern is, and that can be followed up. So I don't know if we need a consensus to do that, it's really basically the policy. So I don't believe we need a consensus, I believe that that's your authority, that's your responsibility. And otherwise, it gets, it gets convoluted, and then you split boards. So rather than splitting the boards, different feelings, just put everything in front, we won't, we shouldn't have an issue.
Well, now that you brought up that, I assume we can vote on the textbooks. But the actual modules, I don't believe there, I believe there should be a discussion on that, but is there an actual consensus needed to whether or not to keep a module or get rid of a module? That is, I believe, what Dean would come to us and advise us. I guess we could give direction. But you can't, not one of us can get rid of the module.
Or the board or the website?
So does the board want to take a vote to get rid of a module? Does the board need to take a vote to get rid of a module?
I would have to research that, exactly what kind of module we're talking about.
But we never have. We didn't, we didn't have that discussion to vote or not vote.
I don't know, I don't, I mean, the years I've been coming to board meetings, I've never seen anybody take a vote or remove a module, so I don't know if that's a discussion or that a vote.
I would have to look and see exactly what you're talking about, modules, you see, this is the same required. Modules that we're talking about, that are not voted up or down, I need to see more information. Where do we get your, how's the writing?
Even if we had the authority to vote on a module, we would need the information from the instructional staff to tell us if they wanted to use it or not, and why.
Right, that's why.
But I, I have the ability to do that. I mean, it's a supplemental instructional tool for the instructional team. We haven't heard any negatives about the modules. I haven't at least. They're an element.
Well, there has been some conversations about the pros and cons, so.
But it is something. Use the pros, don't use the cons.
And we have, you know, in the plan for next year, we have the development of a math team, similar to what we have the literacy team this year, with the goal to review the resources.
So the board does not vote to tell you what to take to implement in your program? I don't believe the board has that authority to do so.
I don't know if I'm able, I don't have this. Want to purchase them all?
No.
No.
Basically. No, no, it's basically because there was something that someone challenged me online, and I said, what are you talking about? Comment made about, oh, the board didn't want to do it, and I can't do it well. And I said, I have no, I have a clue this is what you're talking about. So that's why I brought it up tonight.
Stop beating around the bush, Lee. It's a comment I made online.
I wasn't.
That I said that I don't have enough votes to change the module.
I wasn't.
Change the modules, because I've talked all year long, I've talked last year, that I don't like the modules, I don't think the modules are useful. I think there have been numerous complaints from teachers, parents, and many stakeholders, that the modules are difficult, and they are not really engaging for our children. I'm not trying to, I don't know why you're trying to sugarcoat any of this. And I made the comment, yes, that I don't have enough votes to force the issue, because I believe if we had enough votes to force the issue, we could force the issue and get the modules changed. That's really what a board of education does for their constituents.
Right.
Because our constituents have complained that they don't like the modules. So I don't know why you're beating around the bush and trying to insinuate that I said something I didn't say. That's what I said.
I didn't even name out. Sorry.
But, but, I'm telling you, I did it.
Okay, good for you. Congratulations.
That's what I said. I simply said that. That's exactly what I said, that I have talked numerous times about trying to get the modules changed, and not have modules and have books in classrooms in math. I'm not afraid to say it. I don't think anybody is going to think that I'm lying. I don't think anyone's going to take offense to it. That's. I don't think it has an online component. I don't think it has an online component that is good for the parents or good for the children, which you can bring in with technology, and you can bring in things that the modules just don't offer. I've said it numerous times. I don't know how I can say it anymore. I've said it all year long. It's like beating the dead horse. I'm not going to change my tune. I've listened to Mr. Middleman, and I appreciate what he brings to the table. He has said to us all year long, he wants to have the math director in. We did that in February. We've gone to the next level as part of planning for next year.
First of all, you said we speak to Mr. Middleman, you speak to the board.
At the board, right here in front of all of you. Why are you making an issue out of this? This isn't about a parent, no. See, this is wrong. This isn't about a parent who put something, you, this is about you and me. You're attacking me and something I wrote. Talk about the issues of the modules, and let's leave it at that.
I am.
Because the issues of the modules are, they're not good for our kids.
Lee, why did you bring it up?
End of story. You brought it up to create friction, which is exactly what you're talking about not doing. You're talking about not creating friction in the board, and you brought it up to create friction, talking about something that I know.
Why did you bring it up?
Because someone brought it to my attention. I don't go online when you bring it up.
Why did you bring it to your attention?
Why should I?
Everybody just brings everything to your attention.
I'm bringing up things that are not true. The board did not veto, the board, I was.
I never said that. What I said was it didn't have enough votes to get it done.
But we never asked for a vote.
Well, what, what?
It was pretty obvious in the discussions that we had, that there were not more than two people that wanted to change the modules.
But I don't think it was an item that clarified a vote. But it's not an item that clarified a vote.
If we decided as a board to change the curriculum.
I just annoyed that question, and she's not even sure.
I don't believe that we couldn't change it as a board. Isn't that our job? Isn't that our job as a board? If we wanted to change policy or change something in the school, it's doing good.
I believe that as a board, we give the administration direction, but I don't know the board.
Well, the direction would be to get rid of the modules and find books. That would be the direction, and you can't do that, I believe. As far as I'm going to do that assumption, you can't.
All right, so can you?
So I don't know why, or if you told that I couldn't be.
Yeah, they've seen the board has the authority.
Our parents have spoken, the same parents that.
Uh, leave us.
You want what's best for the children.
That's right. All right, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, so now we're moving over to the public climate, the same rules apply.
Let me back to the video. First of all, tonight, am I going to get a response? Is it going to be a decision made about elementary class coverage? Teachers giving up a prep period to cover, rather than pulling people from providing services to our kids? My only to get closure on that tonight is to go on for two, three months now. My teachers are waiting for a response. Yes or no?
Call me tomorrow.
Call me tomorrow? Okay. Regarding the FERC, are my teachers, I'm not going to look through the emails, I have all here, I have all the proof I need right here. I'd like to see it, you can see it. I have all the emails that clearly support what I've been saying again since this occurred. Okay? Are my five teachers, all I've asked for is an expression that an error was made, there was no FERC violation, a retraction, and an apology. Jesus, I don't see what, I don't see what the big deal is.
There was a meeting today, Dr. Loesing, myself.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So I wasn't taking care of it. My teachers are going to receive a retraction and an apology, that there was no FERC violation.
There was a meeting today, face-to-face, totally voluntary.
Face-to-face?
Correct.
All five?
All three of them attended.
Yeah, all five were. All five were asked to come, they could not all come. There was a meeting today.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of things, Mr. Middleman, about the Promethean boards. They will, you were asked a specific question, were they not viable? And you said none of them were viable. Maybe you don't know this. Many of the Promethean boards that were laying out behind the school in every one of our buildings, thrown into dumpsters, were working the week before. They were thrown, discarded from their rooms, and thrown out. They were all working, working just as well as mine has, that I've had for a number of years. I'm asking this question again, it makes no sense to me, doesn't make sense to most people I talk to. It's common sense. You have a teacher in this room, you have a teacher in this, you have this teacher with nothing, you have this teacher with a working Promethean board. They bring new boards in. They take the working Promethean board and throw it in the garbage, put the new SMARTboard in, and the teacher in this room still doesn't have any technology. That's the facts.
How many rooms did that take?
I don't know. If it was one, it's one too many. But it's many. I had hands go up to Laura Duffield the other day. High school teachers. High school teachers, it happened to many of them. The bottom line is you had kids, students, sixteen years old, saying, what a waste of money. They were taking the pictures. For crying out loud, how, do, if you're going to do something like that, put the stuff in the dumpster neatly, for crying out loud. People that hear taxpayers are talking about money. We have thousands of dollars to just throw away. We couldn't get two, we were lucky we had two thousand dollars for a club. We're throwing away hundreds of working Promethean boards. It's shameful. Donate them to somebody. Do something with them. Don't sit here and tell us that they were not viable, because that's not the truth.
Your time's up, Tony.
And I'd just like to know if we found out from the last meeting, I could beg your indulgence, okay? Did we ever find out who the administrator was, okay, all right? Who told Ms. Kennedy that a person was guaranteed a job in September? It's unethical, it's irresponsible. Did we ever get an answer to that?
We're going back into executive sessions?
Please, because I have my own hypothesis about what happened. Okay? And I know who it came from.
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Ellie?
Yeah. I have two, two questions, two unrelated topics. I'm very disturbed by what Mrs. Kennedy just said about asking for resumes of applicants for job applications. Whether you've seen them in the past or not is irrelevant to me. It is not a board function. It is not a board function for the board to review individual resumes and applications and qualifications. We have a director of personnel, we have interview committees that consist of teachers and administrators whose job it is to go through rewriting samples, listen and view demos of lesson plans. It is not a board function, and this board is not qualified, no, no. I don't mean any disrespect to the teachers and the administrator on the board. It is not a board function for the board to review individual applications.
With the board, can I tell you responsibility?
I have personal experience with board members trying to remove my teaching daughter from a classroom. It is not a board's responsibility to do that.
It's the board's responsibility to vote the day that they're getting approved. It is our responsibility, and we see nepotism, or feel like nepotism, or cronyism is going on, that we can.
Mrs. Kennedy, those who live in glass houses shouldn't throw books.
We're not looking at the resumes. I'm looking at what the professionals have to say about these people.
Please don't stand on a pedestal in front of me. Please. The Board of Education's responsibility is to take the recommendation from the superintendent of schools as to who is on the personnel approval list. And that, I assume, comes from the director of personnel, who's had an interview committee and viewed lesson plans and watched demonstrations in a classroom. That is not the board's responsibility to view an individual resume of an applicant and to decide if that applicant is qualified. The board is not experts in disciplines, they're not experts in subjects or special education. I'm sorry, I disagree with you, and I disagree with this administration that counts down to abort them, but who asks a question?
Actually, I, I hear what you're saying, but Mrs. Kennedy's request is not inconsistent with a specific board policy.
It is not a board's responsibility. I'm sorry, I disagree. And I will have, I will have more to say on that subject. My second question is regarding this budget brochure. In this section of the flyer, I'm a little confused, because it talks about a referendum that was approved by voters in March of two thousand fourteen. And in the same sentence, it talks about the board authorizing a transfer of capital to that fund in two thousand sixteen-seventeen. So how I'm reading it is that the board has already authorized three point seven million dollars out of next year's budget that the voters haven't even voted on yet, and you're putting it into a reserve fund. You're shaking your head now.
Right.
Okay.
The last part, I shook my head no.
Okay, tell me why.
The whole rest of it is crap. There is a budget line item in the sixteen-seventeen budget, which the board has adopted that budget. It's going to the voters on May seventeen. There is a line item to transfer three point seven million dollars to the capital fund for specific use for the two thousand fourteen capital project. Because we wouldn't have bid, the bids did not come in within budget, which is precluding us from being able to make the heating and ventilation corrections that we need to under that proposed project, that approved project. It's unproposed.
So I'm trying to understand, if I go over my time, I'm sorry, but. So you're saying that three point seven million dollars of a budget that has not even been approved yet by the voters is going to be used to pay expenses or projects that were approved previously, that came in over budget?
Which have not been awarded, because they came in over budget. That's correct.
So, so.
The project was approved, the, there was a delay at the state, which contributed to the prices coming in inflated on what their estimates were. Also, there are variables in the trades. It's difficult for the engineers and the architects to estimate the cost, but, you know, sometimes it's underestimated, and that's what happened.
So that is a line item in the budget to supplement the previously approved, voter-approved project to do all the things that are listed there in that section of the brochure.
Now, many of these things I know have already been started, or some of them completed.
Some.
So, so as a taxpayer, you're telling me that you don't need a hundred and eighty-four million dollars to run the educational program? You only need a hundred and eighty plus, because three point seven million is already going to capital projects?
Right, it's itemized in this budget what everything will go to. And it's eight to seventeen, eighteen pages of what's being budgeted and for what purpose, including on the last page, the transfer to capital of three point seven million dollars to do those projects, which are also important.
Which were funded, which, you know, I thought have been funded all along from the capital improvement fund.
They are, when you go out for a bond referendum, you're asking for certain projects to be done with a price tag that's estimated by the architect. You go out, you get voter approval, we did that. You go up to the state, and you get, get the state's approval, they review everything, you know.
You go up to the state, and you get, get the state's approval. They review everything, you know, the budget. So at that time, we don't take into account the, the year and a half that it takes for the approval process? We don't build that in? It took much longer than that, but yes, that is considered. And that's estimated by a professional estimator that the architect retains. And that estimate was, was wrong because the board didn't come out accurately compared to the bids that we did receive because of variations in the trades, materials, timing, all of those things. Okay, thank you.
Um, Sean, I guess, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, it's still today. You were, um, on the last meeting, you had talked about the, I forget, recall the report card? The report card.
Probably tax report card. Yeah.
So the $180 million to the $184, and I think I clarified this at the last meeting, is really a 2.15% increase before all the deductions. And then we got to .08.
Uh, no. The CPI allowed for an increase of 0.12.
No, but if you go from $180 million last year to $184 million this year, on that report card, it said 2.15%.
That's the...
That's the increase.
So that's the budget-to-budget increase with expenditure budget.
Then we take all those deductions, and we got down to .08.
No, that's a different thing.
I believe that includes the state aid that was increased, but .08 is what the taxable levies are.
And right in the GBA.
Okay.
So when your taxes go up, it'll be the .08. The total increase includes the state aid that was increased, which has nothing to do with taxes, just getting to a...
Gotcha. Gotcha, okay. So now the .08, can I, I just wanna know why we didn't go to zero? Why even .08? It's maybe it doesn't matter. Why did we do .08 instead of zero?
Because if all things remain constant, there's a good chance that we could actually go negative next year. So it's not...
But with the New York State audit saying that we went over, we overtaxed our, our taxpayers by $33 million in three years, going negative once or twice may not be such a bad idea, I mean.
Well, they also made other recommendations, like paying down debt, which is something we'll be doing in September.
So that's why you left it at a weight, so that we don't go negative next year?
No, we, we...
Oh.
Yes.
All right. And then, finally, the, the modules. Um, I, I've been at all the meetings. I reviewed some of the tapes, and, and we haven't talked really about removing... I, I think we just found out at the last meeting that the modules were being used as a primary source. I think that's what you told us at the last meeting or the meeting before. Am I correct?
Last year.
Last year? You said they were being used?
It's a primary... That's the, the... We use the modules as a primary resource.
Okay.
In grades K through 12, you know, um, but teachers are allowed to supplement. And they do. We have professional developers on.
So my point question then would be for the board, um, we should, you know, we, you should vote on then taking those modules and not using those, as last week said. You have the, you have five different people. You had, you have a different person on the board now. I would bring that back up and say, let's not use the, those modules. Seventy-five percent of our students opted out. That means that we don't wanna use those modules. So perhaps that should be revisited and said...
Just, just to clarify, I'm sorry to interrupt. The, you know, I think there's a difference between the refusals of the state assessments and the actual standards. Um, the district, you know, we did decide to move forward with the modules for a variety of reasons. Um, as a, a resource for our teachers, a resource for our students. We have worked with our staff. They have done an amazing job throughout the school year and over the summer, creating feedback loops of things that are working, things that aren't working. Uh, we had a large team that worked last summer to redo the modules, to make them more connect-friendly.
I just don't think they should be the primary resource.
I, I understand, and we have heard those, that echoed. And if you listen back to, you know, some of the recommendations that I made during the budget presentation time, we're putting, we wanna hear the stakeholders' points of view.
Well, I think they brought them up pretty well tonight about...
Mr. Grable said it very well, as far as making sure that the teachers have a voice in this. And that's something that we have tried to do in everything that we've done since my arrival here. Part of that process is, is getting together as a team and identifying what's working, what's not working, evaluating different resources that are available to us, and making a really good decision about what's best for our kids. That doesn't happen overnight. It's something that takes time, and it's something that we're gonna invest some time in. We are committed to making sure that we have the best resources for our students.
I'm not saying that you're not, you're not doing that.
No.
I'm not saying that...
But I, I don't, I don't wanna rush into something.
Right.
Because, you know, I, do I agree that the modules, you know, I, I don't have a preference as far as the modules. I'm not a module person, or, you know, like or this. Like, it's a, it's a resource that we have decided to use. We think it's in the best interest of our, of our district at this point. We have heard the complaints. We have heard the criticisms. We, there are positives to it as well. You know, there's a, there's maybe not an equal number, but there are positives to it. We wanna make sure that all the stakeholders that are using the resources, our instructional staff and our administrators, have a voice as we move forward to look at other resources that are available.
I understand that, but I also, in my opinion, and from what I've read on the NISB site, it is up to the board to direct to the superintendent how we want that to go. So if the board decides to remove those modules as a primary source, then, then we are... If I'm wrong, correct me, but then the superintendent has to carry out what the board decided.
All right, I'm sorry. I was talking about something different. I was talking more about just the resource piece itself.
Right, no, and I, right, and I, I got that, right. But in, in my understanding, the board directs to the superintendent, then you send it down to, down the line.
It would be something that would be a goal. And one of the things that we do as a goal over time is revamp and look at our curriculum. We spent thousands and thousands of dollars last summer with teams of teachers diving into the modules and rewriting the units to make them our own. We gave that a year of work with, with our teachers. I know that Dean is losing curriculum writing again for the summer in both ELA and math. So these are things that we're evolving and making our own. And it, it's not something we wanna throw out, because we did have teachers spend a significant amount of time, effort, energy, making them better. Now, are they, are they, they can be? No, absolutely not. And that's something that Dean has teams of teachers and administrators that work with. We, we spent a full year looking at literacy this year, and math will be our primary focus for next year. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did spend tens of thousands of dollars.
Over hundreds of dollars.
I mean, over hundred thousand dollars writing curriculum last summer.
But I think the parents are still saying that their, their kids are still, that's why we still have the off-duty that we have. Parents are still saying that they don't like the modules. They don't like all this, and they don't want it. So...
The, the modules have been testing as separate things, because the modules are designed to put the standards on the ground.
Right.
Now that our teachers are more aware of the standards across Long Island, across New York State, we can now really dig in and look at other things that will, will help our kids be better at the, at the new math and the way the new standards are. So, you know, I think Dean spent many, many hours, hundreds of hours, worth hundreds of thousands of dollars working with our teachers this summer with Bethany Rizzo, who did a lot of work with our modules this summer. Our, our new math director has been here since February. So these are the curriculum writing things that are, that are moving forward. You know, where you're, you're looking at adoption of a new social studies textbook. That probably will be something that we look forward as a resource for math models, math instruction moving forward.
Instead of the, the Engage New York modules?
That have already been modified.
All I'll say is to the board, so you five board members right now, is that you guys should direct this. That's, that's your job. You direct which modules you wanna use, whether it's a textbook or the modules as a primary source. And I hope that you have heard the parents, and I think most of you have, and, and you go forward with that.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just, I just need to say one word, and then this tablet needs to be up here. I'm gonna cut right to the chase. You know, I, I don't, I don't mince words. Right? The reality of this whole situation and what these folks are talking about started two years ago. Okay? When Mr. Adams, you were hired, Mr. Millman was hired. You both came in, you being known as a module guru, Common Core guru, and that is the reason you were hired, because that's where the state was going. So let's not mince words here. For one full year, modules were the primary source of teaching kids in this district, and that came directly from the superintendent and from the assistant superintendent for curriculum. That's the bottom line. The only reason you started to make adjustments is because you saw it was failing, and the pressure from the parents, and the pressures, pressure from the teachers association made it very clear to you. We provided surveys to you about the teachers' feelings about modules and Common Core, okay? How terrible they were. And that's when you started to open up your eyes. I do give Mr. Millman credit, okay, for his efforts in working with the association. And yes, you did spend a lot of money, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Wasted money, because when you first came in, you forced the modules down our throats. That's the truth of the math. Thank you.
I appreciate that the modules were fixed up a little bit. There is more space in the math for young children to actually fit it in, and the spelling errors have been corrected. The font size and the general appearance and the content are still garbage. And don't be insulted to our teachers, but they are inappropriate for the age of the students. They look like college-level papers. They are dotted all appealing, motivating, interesting. They're still confusing the language in the math module as a speech-language pathologist. You have to have a speech-language pathologist go over the math to make sure it is developmentally appropriate for what language skills they're able to do. I, I... It took me a while to gain my composure, because for three years, I have been standing here fighting against these modules. You might not have heard any of this, because you're new. But for three years, countless people have come up and talked about these modules. We have a district that is rip-roaring crazy mad about this testing. And for you to now go and add yet another test to fifth grade after my children have lost two weeks of instruction because of all the state testing they've had? My children have missed library. My children have missed music. My children have missed instrument practice. My children have missed Sequest. For two weeks, basically, school seems to shut down. And now you're gonna add yet another test to my fifth grader that I don't know about and that I don't see, and I won't probably get the scores for it? I don't feel like you're listening to the outrage in this community. I don't understand how we're saying, "Stop the testing," and you're just gonna plow ahead and add another test to the fifth-grade plate. I just, I, it's appalling and unacceptable to me. And this module stuff has gone on for three years. So it's, it just can't be that we don't talk about it. Everybody's talking about it, and something needs to happen. One other point, um, the movement to keep increasing the non-fiction materials. I understand you might need some non-fiction materials, but fiction has been thrown away, thrown away. Creative writing in the ELA is gone. They have to write, their creative writing is to write like something that they experienced or did. That's not creative writing. Creative writing is creating what you want to write about. So the whole ELA, we're pushing further and further towards the non, um, the non-fiction. It needs to be balanced. I'm not saying not do it, but it needs to be balanced. And we're only looking at half of what needs to happen. That other half, every time you're up, one other half is going down. I really don't wanna just keep coming here and beating a dead horse, but I feel like nobody's listening. The community is speaking very loudly.
Very.
Very loudly.
I just wanted to report back to the board. Um, you've made an effort to make sub-teachers want to come here, to be able to hire, um, so that it would be necessary for teachers to give out preps and et cetera. Um, we've changed the rates. I've changed them three times since the middle of January. Um, I can tell you, I have not worked up any new employees. Um, it's the same. We're paying the ones who have been working with us since September. They're now making more money. I am still, um, don't mind the workload. Don't mind it at all. Um, still, instructional staff having to fill in, um, to, obviously, their frustration as well. Um, and that being said, since we're having such a problem finding teachers and educators and people we can rely on that can bring a positive, who connect by, it may just be people we know. It may be friends. It may be a neighbor. You know, this is a community. I'm gonna tell you, most of the community here are our teachers here. They're our staff here. So to reach into this community and find other employees shouldn't be that unusual. And being that we're so short, having somebody come in and out, I have no personal interest in, I don't even live in this district. But I will tell you, having somebody we can count on, because I have the same fifteen long-term subs all year, taking on not one, not two, three assignments. I have clerical staff trying to fill fifteen vacancies in a day. No subs, teachers absent. And yes, you're gonna have this frustration. And yes, we wanna educate the kids, but we may all have to reach and find people we know through friends, through family, whatever it takes. But the holes in education is, is a problem, like resources missing, or library, or music. So trying to argue about the little isn't solving the bigger problem to get the support we need for the kids. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Claudia Kudunas. I'm the co-administrator of the Connect for Parental Education, where Facebook group that supports, um, our community in excessive testing. Getting rid of the modules. It's too late for my kids. They're in seventh and ninth grade. Common Core standards and curriculum and the testing tied to it has destroyed their love of learning. All but ensured that my ninth grader, who is an honor student, who has 102 average in student media, and spends days going without lunch, and two hours after school, an algebra one review, and he has an A in algebra. It ensures that he's probably not gonna get a diploma, so he won't be able to go to college like he wants to. There's no dual oversight in childhood. You guys need to get it together. Seventy-five, seventy-six percent opt out in this community. It's not just about the testing. It's about Common Core standards. It's about modules. It's about Khan curriculum. Our teachers are better than that. I've seen it. I have a special ed student. I've worked closely with my child's teachers. I know them. I know what they're capable of. I don't care that you guys spend $100,000 rewriting that crap. Throw it away. Give our kids something that they can hold on to forever, not something that they're just learning for the test on Friday. I want more. My kids deserve more. Our teachers are better than us. We pay a lot of taxes to have better than Khan curriculum. Inappropriate, aid inappropriate, developmentally inappropriate content. Why can't we see it on? Make us right.
Anybody else? Or once, or twice? All right, so we're ending this meeting, and with those meetings, we're excited that we are taking a five-minute recess. Motion for the Board of Education to begin the executive session in order to split open meetings to one. Uh, to put a, one of five E, negotiations pursuant to the Taylor law, one of five F, employee history of particular persons confidential and exempt under the open meetings law to see legal advice from the board's attorney. Need a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm taking five minutes.